Here.
Councilor Abellman.
Here.
Councilor Backman.
Here.
Councilor Gold.
Here.
Councilor Miller.
Here.
Councilor Felicia.
Here.
And Councilor Van Gansh.
Here.
Did Nick call, did Nick call in, do you know?
I told my caller right from here.
Oh, okay. Okay, one of our council members couldn't make it tonight, but he's calling in, so the town managers.
Hi Nick, your caller 100, we're gonna be sending it. Uh, you're live at the council meeting.
Alright.
Okay, so Councilor Peligian, okay. Okay, so. First item on the agenda is fiscal year 2425 budget deliberations. We have done most of general government and capital. We just have a few motions to clear up some things. There are motions at our desk to take care of that. Do I hear a motion? That in the 2022-23 adopted budget and adopted capital improvement program, $90,000 from the fund balance was appropriated to a paving project at Jerome Harrison School. There is a desire to reappropriate that money for a 2024-25 capital improvements project for the Jerome Harrison School Gymnasium HVAC system.
Make that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. The second motion, do I hear a motion? There is currently $2,500 budgeted in the Public Health Department to fund the community dining room. There is a desire to reappropriate that money to the Operating Transfer Department to send the funds to the Community Gift Fund. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. So now we are on to, there's nothing in debt service to talk about. So we are on to education. Um, so. One of the things that was on our agenda for last meeting that we were unable to get to, um, was the solar credits. And so, so we're gonna start off the Board of Education budget, um, with Anthony kind of walking us through the solar credit debacle that hopefully is straightened out now, moving forward.
So it seems like for the last seven years, we talked about solar credits. And it wasn't until last Tuesday, as I mentioned to you folks, that about four o'clock, we got the lion's share of the bills in from the UI. And to refresh everybody's memory, when we started the solar project, we had to give our online access to the bills to Altus, the company that is managing the solar field, so they can determine how many kilowatt hours we were, uh, the solar field was generating, and then appropriately bill us. We're in the process, it hasn't been finalized yet, of getting that control back on those accounts for both, uh, the town and Board of Ed to access our accounts. Uh, it's, it's in the middle of happening now. So, what you have in front of you on your desk, we'll walk through a couple of items to show you the real life examples. If you wanna take, uh, the benefit one, it's circle B with a benefit one packet. And this is the Town Hall electricity account. So if you look at the beginning balance, balance forward was zero. And this bill goes back to April of '23, it's a period of March 7th to April 5th. You'll notice on the bottom, almost at the very bottom, you'll see four solar credits. $2,500, $2,700, $4,900, and so on. So at the end of that period, the Town Hall had a credit balance with UI of almost $15,000. Okay, if you keep turning the page, you'll see that that follows through. Don't need to look at every single page, if you go to the very last couple of pages, you'll see where we end up in life. And the last statement shows us with a dated 4/8 due date with a credit balance of $25,096.23, which is also what you see on the schedule in front of you on, on line one, beneficial account number one. So what I did, and the other one you have in front of you, uh, number five, is the MBIS project, uh, that you have in front of you as well. And the same logic, go and look at that quickly. Again, beginning balance was zero, you'll see the various charges, and then the four months of credits added to the MBIS account, $12,000 and change, $13,000 and change, $24,000 and change, $33,000 and change. So at the end of that period, MBIS had a credit balance of $74,000 and change. Everybody with me? Okay. Again, turn to the very last. We don't wanna go by month by month, we wanted to be here all night. If you go to the very last bill, you'll see that at the end of the day, as we sit here now, the MBIS credit cumulative is $125,748.33. Everybody see that in the very last couple pages?
Yep.
So what you have in front of you is, I went through. So now that we have the bills, it makes life a little bit easier. So I went through each of the various accounts. Let's go to. To go to Town Hall. So in each of these accounts, the blue line tracks the actual electricity usage for the month. And then you'll notice in the Town Hall, there's the four credits applied, so cumulatively, it's a $14,944 credit balance, as I mentioned. Keep sliding to the right. And you end up with the $25,096 of credit balance for the Town Hall account, as we sit here currently. The actual electricity usage for the year, based solely on the UI usage, was roughly $31,000. So if you go back to the summary page. In total, the solar field is a win. We're getting credits, now, the caveat I have on here that you can't see on this screen, because I've kinda made it big, is I just showed you that the solar credits actually started in December of '22. So there's kind of a disconnect between the solar credits and the billing. But, so don't expect that same level of, uh, win, if you wanna call it that, to continue going forward. But obviously, there's a win where you generated $423,000 of solar credits. Altus, the third party, is looking for $185,000, so the net impact of those two items, it's about $238,000. The impact of the solar field. On, on B. The solar field, you're allowed, you're allowed 10 accounts per project, if you wanna call it that. There's an A project and a B project. This illustration you have in front of you is the B project. And it has Town Hall, Company One, Atwater Library, Intermediate School, uh, Communications Tower that was previously on Commerce Drive. We're switching that over to the new tower on Tilcon, Tennis Court, Streetlights, Sewer Metering Pit, and MBIS Lights. Those are the 10 on solar project. B, B, thank you. Solar Project A, North Bradford High School, uh, Streetlights, Police Station, again, the Police Station tran, that will be transferred to a different account, because obviously the Police Station come July should theoretically be on Wallingford Electric, the Twin Lakes Pump Station, uh, 1675, which is the former senior center. We have some outside lights on there for security purposes, uh, Jerome Harrison and the auditorium. So what you have in front of you is a, a summary of both the A and the B project. That kinda, again, we, we couldn't do this until we got the bills in hand, and that was only last, uh, Tuesday, like four o'clock. So Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, I was crunching numbers and here to the spreadsheets to try to come up with analysis to show you, because the terms solar credits have been kicked around, and no one really had a handle on to what the magnitude was, I don't believe. I know I didn't have a handle on the magnitude. So this kinda puts it all in one spot to show you, per, uh, beneficial account, what the UI charges were, what the solar credits we received were, what the Altus bill, we ultimately owe them, and they've been, they've been extremely patient, Altus, they were due money back for a year now, and, uh, we haven't paid them a dime yet. I know the Board of Ed's paid them a little bit so far, but they've been very, very patient with us. And they understand the whole thing about getting the sequence and, and the, the system in place. So we're gonna try to start, you know, paying them and get them squared up. But that's, that's it, any, any questions, anybody else have a guess?
So after our expenses to Altus, if I understood what you said correctly, the, the total benefit to the town was in the neighborhood of 200, a little over 200?
Uh, on, you want the A or the B, Ron?
Total.
So, no, there's, there's two different, there's two different pots. There's the A pot and the B pot. So you gotta look at, they're, they're listed separately.
Cause, cause you would, you would say that, that, again, I'm trying to follow what you're saying.
So am I.
The, uh, you were saying that the net benefit to the town was like a little over 200?
Right. On, on each of them, if you look at, at solar B, the one that's up there now, the net between the Altus bills and the solar credits, the net is like 238 for the good. But again, that level's not gonna continue, because those Altus, the solar credits, there was a disconnect on timeframe. So it won't be that, that good, it'll be good, it won't be that good going forward. Plus, remember also, they talked that the solar field over time will diminish in its effectiveness, so that may.
So, so. In your best guess moving forward, what can we expect every year?
I'd be lying to you.
The, the only reason I ask is I wanna make sure that we're, we're assessing these numbers accurately, because we were told originally by the company, we were only gonna get about 110, 120 a year. Now we're talking.
Right.
A lot more than that, so I just wanna make sure that we.
I, I, like anything else brand new, you really need a couple of years of track record to get firm lumpers you can have faith in. I mean, it's kinda like, you know, the Police Station numbers going forward, what's the utility bill gonna be? It's a guess, I mean, there's a lot of soft, you know, it's not really firm numbers, quite honestly. Uh, this is the black and white, I mean, I have the bills, it's gonna be the bills. Uh, you have the Altus bills in front of you as well for that solar B. So it's, it's not, you know, I didn't pull it out of the air, it's black and white, those, those are the numbers. What's going forward, I, I honestly couldn't tell you, I, I don't profess to be, um, an expert on the solar world.
And these numbers are great, um, but I just, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, and I, I get your point 100%.
Yeah.
I, I just can't give you an honest answer that I would have faith in without, you know, pulling out.
This number is like inflated by about four months' worth.
Right.
Because of December to April.
So four months' worth, well, what about the, from last year? How can we even start from when this program started?
That, that does.
Yeah, that does.
This is the whole thing?
That's from, from today.
Cause on the, okay, cause on the back.
So it's like 16 months, 16 months, 16 months, all included on both of these?
I'm sorry?
All included on both of these?
Everything. Yeah, all, all those are from, the beginning balance on, on each of those packets, Councilor, is, is zero, right? If you turn it to the very first page.
Yeah, I understand.
So that's, that's when the whole process started, up until today. So again, is that gonna be the number going forward? I, I'd be lying to you, I, I have no idea, to be honest. I mean, the numbers are great now, and you're right, the, the, the presentation was 120 odd savings. So where all of a sudden are we saving, you know, this boatload of money? I don't know, but that's the black and white that you have in front of you, that shows the, the UI savings, the credit balance on UI accounts. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty significant.
Thank you for doing all this, I know this was probably.
So if, if I look at the UI bill packet.
Oh, I'm looking at the.
Okay.
Right?
So. Are you on number one or number five, which one are you looking at?
I'm looking at, uh, number, number one.
Number one. Gotcha, okay.
So, the first page is, is, is March, is basically March.
Right, March 7th, April 5th. You're correct.
That's right. So that's one month. So in one month, we received a $14,000 credit?
Because it went back to December. Okay, so that, that. January, February, March. That first month was four months of credits, because the whole process started in December of '22.
So now, when we go to the next page, the next cycle, or next, uh, so it's April to May.
April to, yeah.
Right, so that 19 down there, that 19 down at the bottom, that includes the 14.
Correct. Beginning balance is the 14, and then that one month there, you got $6,000 worth of credit.
Right, okay. I was just trying to get a handle, or get a feel for what a month would, would generate.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
So we're, we're saving approximately $30,000 a month, at this point.
At this point, again, but again, is that? Is that the ongoing numbers, is that sustainable? I, I don't really have an answer, Corin.
We actually had a lot of rain this year, so it was going pretty good, right? And a lot of rain.
Time they deteriorate?
Yeah, we were told that when they were installed, that.
They're less effective.
Weather gets on them, and the, the power, they deteriorate, the amount of energy they can create, I guess, is diminishes over time. Again, I'm not, don't profess to be a solar expert, but that was what was portrayed to us when this whole thing started.
Okay, so. We're due approximately $480,000.
We have, we have, we're gonna have savings on our books, right, between Town and Board of Ed, correct?
Right, for $480,000.
Yeah. I see what you're saying.
But there's also three months to go for this year yet.
Right, so it's not an accurate.
No, I understand that.
And again, I really, I really wouldn't put faith in the numbers until we have one or two years of track record to see how this thing truly plays out. Is this an anomaly, where we're getting this huge amount of credit? Granted, there was that first month, we got the four months of credit, but.
Right.
This can't sustain forever, I mean, this would be, we'd be the king of the solar fields if this was the case. We put two or three more in, why not, right?
Hey, absolutely. So what's the total bill to Altus then, for the last 16 months?
Well, that's, yeah, there's a, it's 185 and 179, I think it was.
Yes. Yeah, so that's solar, uh, B is 185, and then solar A is 100, yeah, 180 roughly, so 360, plus or minus?
So we're in the, we're in the plus of a little over $120,000.
No, more than that. Yep, because Altus is, Altus is already figured into.
Yeah, that's it, that's the net savings, yeah.
Already figured in.
Yes.
So.
Where's that money?
Going forward, Anthony.
Yes.
Can, can, um, you provide us, you know, on a monthly basis, the monthly charge, the monthly credit?
Sure.
So that we're not looking, the, these are, these are crazy numbers to be looking at.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm with you, I'm with you. So I, I'll, um, obviously, the, the town numbers, we're gonna get access to, the board numbers, the board will have access to. I could work with Martha and get those, or compile a, a summary spreadsheet for you. That, that's, that's doable.
Your efficiency does go down, though.
Yeah, no, that, that's fine, but I mean, I think just from a, a measurement.
Right.
So we understand what, what we're achieving, rather than just one lump sum.
I'm with you, no, I, I get it.
Tommy, do you think that quarterly would be okay? Uh, monthly, that's kind of, uh, cumbersome.
Yeah, yeah, or something, something, where we see each, each account.
I agree with that.
So that we know what we're actually receiving, you know, so I think that's pretty important. Because I think it's also important to share with the, the public, because the public had all kinds of questions about that solar field go, going in. I know I had received a lot of calls.
Right. So on a quarterly basis, starting with July 1st? You want, or, or, so April, May, we'll do April, May, June, 30, we'll do one, and then end of quarter.
Well, we'll see, yeah, we'll see where this year ends, and then.
That makes sense.
So, given, given this data that is up there, and these are true credits, that are both, are due both to the Board of Ed and to the town. Obviously, the Board of Education has the bulk of this credit. So, um, one of my questions to the board is, in your, in the current year budget, 2324, did you budget any solar credits?
No, and neither did we budget any, um, invoice, uh, billing towards Altus either. And to date, we've gave about $64,000.
Well, well, in your electric account, you have, according to the budget stuff that you gave us, for this year's budget, you had roughly $575,000 billed for electric.
Yes.
Your UI bills are zero.
Right, but we.
So your Altus bills.
We had to account for the increase in the electricity at the new high school, and John can speak to, um, the electricity costs, because they've risen significantly with the new building.
But, but if you don't have, so you got an electric, you, you budgeted $570,000 in this year's budget for electric. Your UI bill is zero. All, everything that I've seen here, they're all zero, and we have solar credits left. And then there's the Altus bill, so the Altus bill becomes your electric bill. So the $570,000 that you budgeted is obviously for all of your schools and, and your buildings. So, does it make, so does it make a difference whether it's a UI or Altus bill? Cause that's your, you have one electric.
I did a wrong analysis, um, using the same numbers, um, for the UI credits that, um, Anthony just displayed for all of the Board of Ed accounts. And we have, um, the amount due to, um, Altus, and then the amount so far that we've paid to, uh, UI, and then the balance, uh, remaining. Can I bring this up to, so you can see it?
Just keep in mind also, only half of that project is complete right now. The second half is a significant amount of square footage. So th, these costs are gonna get much greater, you know, for that building, we're only occupying half of it right now.
Scott, our new building is costing us more.
John.
For electricity, John, it's costing us more than our old building?
That's a good question, yes.
I would expect that it would be less, there's more technology.
New building is costing you more because you replaced a building that was what you call a non-electric building. The old building, just, you had very minimal electrical draw, you had no HVAC systems. You had a very minor running hydronic hot water heating system. The lighting was switched to LED years and years ago, there was no electric draw in that building. This building you have now is all electric. You have four HVAC units on the top of this building that draw hundreds of amp hours per hour, they run 24/7. You have two chillers outside that draw, again, hundreds of amp hours, that, that run 24/7. You have a building, and the town, when they decided to put this building up, as far as I know, never asked the architect for an energy audit, never asked the architect how, what it was gonna cost to run the heating and cooling. This system, the heating and cooling run year round. We don't shut the heat off and turn air on, we don't shut the air off and turn the heat on. They both have to run at the same time, all year long.
So the reason I'm, I'm not doubting what it, what it is and what it isn't.
Yeah.
I'm just shocked, because I think of, okay, old school.
Yeah.
You know, like an old car, right?
Yeah.
Using a lot of energy, now we have the new supermodel.
You, you weren't using a quarter of the energy at the old school as you are here.
Only half.
You're totally, and.
And it's a smaller building.
There's four more HVAC units on the roof of Phase 2. You, the bills are only gonna go up. You, you have a total different operating building now. Even though it's energy efficient, all the, all, everything in there is, is the most energy efficient equipment, but you have multiple equipment that you never had in the old building. There's four circulating pumps in that boiler room that are this high, that run 24/7. It, it's, you.
Crazy.
Yeah, it's, that's the building you built. That's, that's today's technology.
Plus all the other, the smart boards.
Every room has Promethium boards.
Every, everything.
Uh, you, you have computers running all the time, but that, that's not a quarter of the draw that your HVAC system is running. Nice shot.
Alright.
So where does your electric, because you, if you, we don't have any UI bills. This, this does not answer the question of, okay, you have the UI credits, which you agreed to what Anthony had, and then there's the Altus bills, but, but.
And there's also some UI bills that we've already paid, um, to date, because our old high school building, that, that was the account that was receiving the credits, and we've been receiving invoices on the, the new high school, and now I believe we're also paying, um, parking lot lights, which I don't think we had before. So all that is factored.
I, I know, but, so the $570,000 that you budgeted for this year.
Yep.
On here, and there's.
There's a $79,000 increase alone for the high school for next year.
Right, so in that $570,000, you had X number of dollars of energy, of electric bills for Jerome Harrison. The UI part is zero. Because the UI bills come out to zero, because you have a credit.
When we budget.
And then, and then Altus becomes your electric bill.
I budgeted for the UI bills, because that's all I knew of.
Which is fine.
In December.
So Altus replaces UI, because UI is zero.
No, we're paying, we're paying Altus in addition to UI, because if you see on that little summary, that, um, there is an amount due for the new high school building, I believe it is. Still, after we theoretically take away the, the credit for that building.
Well, if we, if we look at the NBIS, because that, that's part of the UI bill here. I think it's on number B, number five here, is, is NBIS here. So. So if you budgeted for the current year, for NBIS, if you budgeted, I don't know, I'm just gonna pick a number, $150,000 as your electric cost for NBIS. You, the UI bill is zero, because you're at, we're at a credit balance. So the Altus that you pay of $61,000, that becomes your UI, that's what you budgeted.
I can tell you.
I mean, that goes against your budgeted amount.
One second. So our current budget, I'm gonna go, let's see, for the intermediate school, right now, is $186,000, and we budgeted $195,000, which is an $8700 increase for next year. Jerome Totucket stayed the same, so there's a zero increase on those. And the electricity for the high school currently is at 116, and I budgeted $195,000 also.
So, so are you in current, are you in 2324 year, or 2425? What I.
Doing the, our current, what we currently have budgeted for 2324, and what we've proposed for 2425. So for the high school, it's also $195,000, which is $79,000 just for the high school. So just those two accounts alone, it's, uh, $87,000, that isn't, is that, is the increase for electricity.
So NBIS, you said you have how much budgeted for this year?
Currently, it's 186.
So you budgeted $186,000 for this current year?
Yes.
The UI bills as of up to April are zero.
Well, we also take into cons, into consideration our past expenditures, because those are the best indication of the future.
Yeah, so the, so we're, so, so.
That's what I.
So you're zero, so you budgeted 186, your UI is zero, and Altus is $61,000. You budgeted 186, and UI is zero, and Altus is 61. Because, and because we have this credit with UI, so I don't know.
I budgeted based on.
Which is fine, I'm not arguing the budgeting point, I'm just trying to get to the point of, you said, you know, you didn't budget for Altus, but you budgeted for UI.
Right.
UI is zero, so Altus becomes your UI.
The increase on electricity for the intermediate school is $8700 for next year, that's all.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm not, that's not my point. My, my point is, you said you didn't budget for Altus for this year, and my.
Didn't.
Right, which is fine, but UI, you budgeted for UI, $186,000. UI bills up through April of this year, UI is at zero. You, you shouldn't pay, according to this, you wouldn't, you won't pay UI one penny. But you will pay Altus $61,000 according to this. So you budgeted 186, you pay Altus 61, you still are, uh, according to your budget, $120,000.
According to the summary that we did, our, our numbers differ.
Well, I, that's what I don't understand. That's what I'm trying to get a handle on, and, and that's why I asked how much you budgeted for this year. And according to all the UI invoices, which are in black and white right here, you don't, you won't pay anything to them up through April, and you still have $125,000 credit. So the 186 that you budgeted for electric costs, even if you pay Altus the 61 that you didn't budget, you're still ahead. Am I not reading that correctly? I mean, that's the way this...
Right, but if you look at the new high school, I believe there's $186,000 owed.
How could that be?
Well, on the summary, there, I...
I, I don't know, I mean, I'm just, I, I'm just, I focused on NBIS because we have all the invoices right here. And that's, and that's, and, and I couldn't tell out of the budget how much of the $553, $553,000, how much is NBIS.
Why don't we give you the sheet that Martha's working on, so you have the actual...
Well, I have this sheet. This is what she just handed me.
Well, you may find this, you may find this helpful. This is a line-by-line of our complete budget, what we currently have budgeted and what is proposed. So you can see, line-by-line, the change and the increase, and then over to the right in the pink is the subtotal for each object.
Thank you, Martha.
So hopefully this helps you at least understand what's in our budget.
You have to do this next week?
No, we have to finalize the budget. But this doesn't make sense.
Martha, can you direct us on this to where the electrical expenses are?
These, just a reminder, these are not expenditures, this is the budgeted figures. So if you, the object number is the last number in the string that you see on the left-hand side. So if you turn to quite a few pages in, to 622, it's almost towards the back, you'll see halfway, more than halfway down the page.
What's the function number?
2610. But these are sorted by object.
Well, it go by six, go by 622. You have to go by six, you have to go to 622.
It's the fifth page from the back, if that helps.
It's in the 622s, it's right there, Maria, I think you're on the right page. You got it? I thought you said you didn't.
Yeah, so, so you have, so you have, the current budget year, you have a $186,255 budgeted for electricity for NBIS.
Correct.
Right, so if I take the UI bills, you're at zero. You, you won't pay for, on NBIS, we're just talking NBIS, it's zero. And Altus is 61,000. So you're still, for this current year, you would be $125,000 that, that you haven't spent of your budgeted money, which is exactly what the UI credit is that's on there. So even though you didn't budget for Altus, you still have money in your budget to, to pay for Altus, because you're not paying UI. So you'll be, you'll have money left over. Is, is that, is that correct? Do you read it that way also?
I understand what you're saying, yes, but as Anthony said, we don't know going forward, month to month.
Right, so, but we're going to focus on just this year, because we have to deal with the solar credits. And, and so if I take the four accounts that are on solar, Jerome, Auditorium, NBIS, and the high school, what we currently have for solar credits adds up to approximately $315,000, which is money coming to the Board of Education on there. And in checking with the town attorney as, and to the auditor as to how we handle this, so that the Board of Ed gets this money on there, the way we have to do it is to make a motion to allocate money from your current year's budget that you would save to put into Fund 25, what you call Account 25. And that will get you the amount of money, the credit, that is currently on the books. So if I take the current credit, which is roughly $315,000, and this is, we still have three months to go, and in looking at the high school, the amount of credit that was on the books prior to the last month's bill, which was the bill we received in April, the credit for the high school was a little bit higher than the current $99,000. So that means they used out of the, so it's all, we have to use the numbers that we have. So if I make the assumption that they're going to be using out of that credit pool for the next three months to get us to June 30th, instead of giving the Board of Ed the full $315,000, because there's probably going to be some more that's used out of that, my proposal would be to give $275,000, which is, I just took that, 13,000 times 3 is $39,000, $40,000 on there. That would be used from now to the end of the year. And meanwhile, the other three accounts could, their credits could still go up high based on the history for the last 12 months. Those could go up a little bit more. But we won't know what that true credit is until that point in time, but we need to make a best guess estimate tonight, because we need to finalize the budget tonight. So we, we do have a motion prepared. So do I hear a motion to allocate to the Board of Education that they can transfer $275,000 from the 2023-24 budget to the 2% fund, also known as Fund 25, to be used in All expenditures from this fund must be approved by the Board of Education.
So move.
Second.
So is there any further discussion from the council? Does everyone understand what that...
All expenses have to be approved by the Board of Education?
Yes, that's the way the motion is. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, so that takes care of solar credits for this year. We understand that this is not, is probably not going to be the norm every year. We just need to get some, this is what's on the books right now. Will it be at this point next year? I highly doubt it, but there, there may be some credits there. We're not sure. We just need to get more information, to get more history on here. But this gives the Board the credits that are on the books right now. This is the way that we could get the money to you for those credits. The next motion is regarding the Special Ed excess cost grant. So Scott had sent us all an email on Friday last week explaining the Special Ed excess cost grant, how much they expect to receive, and the amount is approximately $325,000. So I would, do I have a motion that all Special Ed excess cost grants received from the state of Connecticut in 2024-25 will be directly reported as Board of Education funds?
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to remind people that by state statute, that money is supposed to go to the Board of Ed, okay? It's not a gift we're giving them. We're giving them the money that they're supposed to get, according to state statute. I just want to put on, I want to go on record saying that.
Well, that's fine, but also, they, they budget Special Ed at 100%. Some districts do not budget Special Ed at 100%. They discount based on what they are going to receive from the Special Ed excess cost grant. The budget, the budget here...
I just want to speak up, that's not, that's not correct.
Okay, just, just a minute. So the budget that we see, that is presented to us, shows, from what we can see on it, it shows that it's budgeted at 100%, that they're, they're not taking a discount on here. So Sarah, if you would like to speak.
Yeah, so the, the money that we're talking about right now, the $326,000, that's money based off of expenses that we spent this year. There was no way when we put together last year's budget that we would be able to anticipate our special education costs. We oftentimes have to deal with, and I say that in the sense that it's our obligation, students who will begin into the district who have costs that far surpass what would be a typical expenditure for a general education student. What we're expected to do is fulfill that basic contribution of $93,000 or so. Anything above that is what the state will then give us 65% of. But oftentimes, those numbers change throughout the year. And so while I 100% put together a budget that I anticipate to be able to cover the cost of special education, those nine, and right now it's nine students, for the 23-24 school year, it's nine. At the beginning of the school year, it wasn't nine. And in the middle of the school year, it wasn't nine. And I anticipate at the end of the school year, we might be looking at a different number as well. And so it's a moving target for us. So for us to take this $326,000 and put it towards the 24-25 school year, I, I can't, that's, for me to say that's 100% of what we're expecting for special education would not be a true statement. So I just want to make sure for the record, for everybody here, the reason that the funding is given to us within the year that the funds are expended is because of the unexpected nature. So at the beginning of the school year, I put together, I encumber funds that I would anticipate are going to be going towards those costs, whether it be tuition, private nursing, transportation. In February, January, February, we'll receive approximately 75% of the funds that are deemed excess. Again, 65% of those funds expended above $93,000. It's a fraction of what we're spending. We then have to submit, and I'm submitting quarterly reports to the state, including student identifying information and what we're spending. So those reports are fulfilled every single month by my office. And when we get to February, anything that we spent that meets that, we're getting a percentage of that. We then come back in May, and sometimes I get the amount they told us. I believe this year, we're expecting about $75,000, but sometimes we're not. But that's also when I'm starting to have to pay for the remaining transportation costs, the remaining tuition costs. And so that's where those funds become important. And so when we kick the can down the road, and we take the funds that are intended for this year, and we put them towards next year, we're, we're simply, we're not matching apples and apples, which is what the funds are anticipated for. And, you know, I'm, I'm more than happy to come and have these conversations and share what this is about. This is the first district I've been in that I've had these conversations. It's typically given to the Board of Education, because it's, that's, that's what the funds are for. And it's not a conversation about budgeting 100%. If I could have a crystal ball that could tell me what my Special Ed costs are going to be, it would make my job a heck of a lot easier. But, but it's not. And so our job is to be able to, is, is to be creative with what we have, to ensure that our students are getting what they need. And sometimes it, it becomes a dance of, okay, we have to move this here and move this here, but then put it back where it belongs, in order to be able to pay the costs of our students. So I just want to make sure that my, my role here is just to inform and, and make sure that everybody understands what we're talking about. And so while we're talking about moving these costs to the 24-25 school year, that's not the intention of the excess cost grant.
But just to add to what Sarah said, after she does the numbers in the proposed budget, I do go in and reduce what she requested by the conservative amount for excess cost. So in the 24-25 proposed budget, I did reduce the non-public tuition line by $175,000. And I believe this year, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 to 25.
Okay, which line, tuition, non-public?
Yeah, I, is it 563?
It's 563.
Yeah, but you will see an increase there, because that's based on the actual students. So the, the increase that Sarah proposed was over a million, and the reduction of 175 brought it down, I think, to 917, I think it says, or 912.
912.
Yeah.
Okay, so the way that the budget is presented to us, and, and I'm assuming this is the same way that your board got it, there's no way for us to know that that's what happened here, because there's no notation here. I'm looking at what you have here, and there's an increase, and it just says that it's based on actual student needs and outplacement. It doesn't, it doesn't say that it was reduced by anything, that you're discounting it. So from, from us to understand this and to look at this, it doesn't tell us that you decreased this, because this is what we were given.
I believe in the object summary that was in the PowerPoint, I thought I had noted that there was $175,000 reduction.
Well, I, I'm looking at, when I talked to you earlier today, you said that it was on the object change and why the change, and you noted it, but there's nothing noted on here. So if, if we don't understand this, and this is the same thing your board gets, I, I don't know how the board would understand this either on here, because it certainly is not clear here. But that, but that's fine. I mean, we've been giving the excess cost grant every year for the last number of years to the Board of Education in Florida.
The whole thing, right? 100%, right?
Yes, yes.
I think part of the challenge is that the funds are provided as part of our, our budget approval, and so in, in, and my, my assumption is that in this conversation, when we're talking about the 24-25 budget, that that excess cost of $326,000 is going to be intended as part of that, and that's what's happened in years past. So this is the budget we're approving, and we're, we're giving you, as, as Councilwoman Diamond had shared, we're giving you this as part of your budget. However, that $326,000 is intended for the 24, 23-24 school year. So if we're looking at next, this year, I believe the excess cost that was given to us as part of the budget for this 23-24 was 200, maybe 270,000, or, or perhaps less than that. And so there's just that mismatch. And so I understand, I understand how you're utilizing the funds in the budget approval process. However, I, I don't know that the two necessarily match up together, and I just want to make sure that, that that's something that everybody is aware of. And, and again, that's, I, yes, since, I, I think I've, I've had this conversation for the three years that I've been here in front of you, and I'm probably sounding like a broken record at this point, but I just want to make sure that, that there's an understanding, because it is confusing. And I, I look at these numbers, I do these numbers, this is, this is my job, and, and there's times where my head starts spinning as well, so.
So if this money wasn't available, like, if it was not coming to, to the town in North Bradford, what would, what would happen?
We would end our year with tuition costs, transportation costs, the private nursing costs have been a recent expense, that we don't have the funds to be able to pay. I think in the three years that I've been here, we have been able... we have been able to, we have received those funds. It's been pushed back. However, we've also had access to Fund 25, which has allowed for some additional expenses. Now, if you were to ask me, show me the line item where you made the transfer for tuition, it's not a clean line like that. What we're often looking at is, you know, we encumber funds at the beginning of the school year. If I know, for example, I know right now that my transportation costs far surpass what I have budgeted for. But what I also know is that we're going to be having conversations as the years come, as the year comes to a close, to determine where does this fit in, in terms of tuition costs? And did we have any students that moved out of district? Did we have any decrease in those costs? And again, it's the unexpected nature. And so, it's a bit of a dance that we do every year, especially in the kind of March to May time. And there is always the surprise at the end of the year. While we're anticipated to get the $73,000 in May, I, I have a very strong feeling, based on my numbers, that that's going to be a lesser amount because it's a projected cost, a projected amount that we're spending. And we do have a student who did not utilize the funds that we had allocated in our excess cost certification. So, what the state is anticipating that we're spending is going to be a little bit less because of that. That directly will impact that second check that we get. That's why it's broken up into two. So, I can't report to them what I've spent for a year in February. So, once I put my final amount in, in May, they'll be giving me that second, they'll be giving the town.
Right, so, but my, I guess, what I'm really asking, maybe I didn't ask it right. At the end of the budget year for the Board of Ed, if, if that money did not exist, what would happen? What would happen? Would, would we pay the bills? Pay the bills? Because the way I'm also looking at this, this, this money comes through from the state, and you could look at it in another way, that, that's taxpayer money, right? So, it gets reallocated back, it's getting reallocated back to the Board of Ed just in the next year's budget. Because, you know, those are taxpayer, that's taxpayer money. So, and our, and our responsibility here in the council and the Board of Ed, what, is to, we're guardians of the taxpayer. Right, so, we just have to make sure that we're being constructive and responsible. And, and I, you know, and, and I know that everyone else is too, but that, that's, that's how we look at it.
Absolutely, and, and if the board were not to receive those funds, so again, you know, I would be operating budget season a little bit differently. If I anticipated that excess cost was not an option for us, that the funds that we are expending above and beyond what would be spent on a, you know, again, that basic contribution level, I would be requesting a different amount. So, whether what you guys do with that request is, is obviously up to the, the Town Council and, and to the Board of Education. However, if we did not receive those funds, if we were expected to, to take on those excess costs that are unexpected, right? There are some that, that we can expect, and I can put them into the budget. I can't expect a student moving in with $130,000 tuition bill. That's not, it's $130,000 that, where am I going to come up with that? That's not something that we have lying around. It's not coming from instructional supplies. And so, does that, is that a rare occurrence? No, it's not. And we also have tuition costs that go up. So, if, if we were to say, you know, you are not having access to the excess cost grant, the excess cost money is going to go back to the town to utilize for whatever you're intending to utilize it for, then we would have to, one, we'd probably be late on our bills for tuition, and they'd roll over to the next year, and it would snowball into a bigger issue where we're now looking at broken relationships with our out-of-district partners who are no longer going to be willing to take on North Branford students because we're not able to pay those bills. Obviously, I would do everything in my power to avoid that from happening. But there would have to be, you know, cuts made in, in other places. And I certainly understand that it's taxpayer dollars. I, I understand that. There are also funds that are being spent on the children of those taxpayers. And maybe not their individual children, but as a whole, when we look at our budget, we're not looking at an individual student or group of students. We're looking at all of the students in the district.
You can't refuse these children.
I'm sorry?
We cannot refuse these children.
Absolutely.
We keep talking about the 25 account, and that 2% retention over time. So, over the last three and a half years, we've tapped into about $1.4 million to offset and to move forward in building these budgets over the last three, three and a half years.
Like money that you spent the previous year.
It's monies that we, the monies that we save in our budget process, rolled. It was used in the budget process the next year, rolled to the next year. And, and, you know, the charge was to, to spend that down to $30,000 is where we're at right now. But now, we're going back to the 25 account with the solar fund. So, so what we were getting away from, we're going back to because that's your contingency. We don't have the ability to do that. And, and there's a couple other savings that, that, if the 25 account was available, could, could assist in this process moving forward. Because the last thing you want to do is get into bad accounting principles. So, taking money from this year, spending it next year. And that's what the 25 account, account by the state was established for. And it gave towns and boards the ability to do that. Because when we budget special education, or the weather, or the amount of energy from a solar field, we're going in blind. We don't know what's going to happen that next year. And that avails us the opportunity to do that.
But the, the way the motion reads, it says that the excess cost, any excess cost funds received from the state in '24-'25 will be credited to the Board of Education. So, whatever funds you receive next, in the next fiscal year, it's not talking about the 325 that you received because that was already allocated to you. So, the, so, so you don't know what's going to be coming in '24-'25 at this point in time because we're not there. But this motion says that you will get those funds in the year.
Okay.
For, for there. So, so, so it's not a lag. It's the same year that you get them, that the state's giving them, you're getting them. They're, you're being credited the same year. So, it should be equal on there. There shouldn't be a lag on that. And that's, that's the way this year's funds work also. Is that whatever funds we got this year from special ed access were credited to the Board of Education. So, you've got them in the year that, that the state allocated. So, it's not a year off on there.
But for clarification, when we look at our percentage of what we were given of new monies, taxpayer money, they're two separate, the solar field is separate, as is the reimbursable. It's monies that we budget for.
But you didn't budget for the solar credits.
No.
This time?
No.
This, this is new. So, so that's, it's not in the budget at all. So, that's like found money on both sides, town and Board of Ed. Because in the current year, the town did not budget for solar credits either. We did budget next year for some solar credits. We did not budget the current year, nor did the Board of Ed. Because none of us knew.
We, we didn't know till last Tuesday.
Right, either did we.
What the formula was, or what it was, or how much there was, or.
Right.
Which is.
Right, so, so, so that, that's why they were earned on your side, and we wanted to make sure that we give you that, that money that is due from the solar credits. And the attorney told us, the only way that we could do that is through Fund 25. Because that, we were not going to use Fund 25, but that's the only way we can get you the solar credits that are coming to you. Okay, so are we, any other discussion on the special, the motion about the special ed excess cost grant? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion carries. Okay. The last motion is regarding how much money we are going to give the Board of Education for their operating budget out of budget funds. So, I just need to hear a motion so we can do discussion.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we give, that we give increase the '24-'25 operating budget for the Board of Ed by 2%, not 1%.
We need a dollar amount.
Pardon?
We need a dollar amount.
Oh, well, I don't have the exact, and I need help with that then. I thought I, I.
A percentage point would be slightly over $300,000. So, 2% would be 600,000.
600,000?
Is it?
668014.
668014.
668.
014.
What's the rest?
014. 014.
01?
4. 4.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
If I may, give me, I know that I'm in the minority, but I would like to have my say tonight.
Yeah.
Over the year, over the years I've been on the council, I've watched the increases that the board has asked be slashed. In 2021, they got 0.78%. In 2122, they got 0% increase. In 23, I'm sorry, 2223, it was 0.92%. Last year, it was 203%. And I'm asking for at least 2%. I know that the board wanted 7% for a proposed budget, and it was about 6-something for the status quo budget. Now, some people have said, and I've heard people say this, and maybe this is a lack of communication, how is it that the Town Council doesn't give the board what they need, and yet they seem to survive? Well, I think this particular year, they survived for a couple of reasons. Number one, the Fund 25 had almost $400,000 in it. That helped. Number two, they had the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funding. That helped, but that's gone. They had the money from the excess cost grant. But, when I, when I look at what they're proposing for this year, 74% of that is in salaries and benefits. There are other things that I don't think people know about, but I, obviously, I was in education, so I pay attention. I still read the newspaper. There's a K3 mandated by the state, reading program that you have to put into effect. North Branford didn't get a waiver for that, but neither did a lot of other school districts. But they have to put that into place. I don't think people will look carefully that there's another state mandate that all HVAC systems in all school buildings have to be evaluated, inspected and evaluated by an outside electrician. There's a, just the amount of money alone in terms of transportation, salary and benefits makes me nervous. But I also have to be a realist, and I understand that the taxpayer, at this stage, cannot deal with a 7% increase. I think that we're looking at, because of the debt service and everything else, I think we're looking at a 2% increase, I'm sorry, a 2 mil increase. And my understanding in talking with the mayor today that I think a 2% increase in the board's budget would not bring it higher than a 2 mil increase, if I'm correct, or we talked about that. You know, it's a tough time, and I don't want to put a bird on the taxpayer, but I also have to think about the students in North Haven. You know, I know it's trite to say, but they are our future, and we have to do something for the, I think we have to look at the kids. And if we could give them a little bit more than 1%, I think it would help. That would be $300,000 that maybe they won't have to cut some staff, they may not have to cut a coach, they may not have to cut an athletic program. I'm just asking if the Town Council would consider. I know I'm the minority, but just think about, if we could at least give them 2%, I think it would help. I am a realist, I realize we can't give 6% or 7%. Amen.
I, I appreciate where you're coming from. I think that the Board of Ed's a very important part of town's expenditure. It's our largest expenditure. It's a lot of, of what takes the budget up and what's going to take up the mil rate. And I think we all appreciate as citizens here that we don't want the mil rate to go up exponentially. It's, it's tough on folks, as is right now with other rising costs. You know, I'm, I'm outside of your taxes. I do support an increase. I think we do have to be prudent with that increase. I think our goal is to keep the increase of, of mil rate at, at one, near 1.5. So, it's, it's not such a shell shock. It's going to, we're going to have, this is going to come around again next year, and then a year after that. Because I don't see anything changing where it's going to get less expensive to live and work and provide in Connecticut. It just doesn't seem to be going that way. I would support a 1.5, which would be around 501, 010, and 31 cents. About where I would be. I think that can, that's, it shows an increase. And I agree, I don't want to see coaches or, or teachers or, or anyone really, any program to be cut in the Board of Ed. It's a very important area, and you guys do an excellent job. I really do applaud with what you've done and continue to do. I'm very proud of our, of our Board of Education. But I also need to, as Tom said, we need to be prudent to all taxpayers in this town to make sure that we do the right thing by not increasing that, that mil rate too much. We have a lot of expenditure, and they don't look at it the way that we do. They look at it holistically. We're spending money, we're building police stations, we're building high schools, changing roofs. They see all this stuff happening. And I think it, it's a very frustrating thing for the, the lay taxpayer. Not to say that they're laying the way that they can't understand, they just aren't as informed, not in front of it every day. But I do, I do very much believe that an increase is, is necessary in today's environment.
So, how many of you have gone through the school system? Graduated high school, gone to college, through North Branford?
I mean, I didn't grow up here. My two daughters, they, they went through the high school. They have their degrees in, in college, and they're doing very well. I, I know that you went through school here.
I did.
You went to school here. I don't know, Walt, I know.
Milford.
You went to Milford. Anybody have kids in the school system presently?
I do.
Right, so, I, I think Rose, you have some grandchildren in this, in this, in the system.
I, I do, but you asked children, and I don't have children.
Oh, so. All right, so I'll set it to. Siblings or grandchildren that are in the school system? I, listen, like I said, I, I am all for the school. I'm also a taxpayer in the town. Right, I, I don't want my taxes to go up, but we still need to give back. We still have to take care of our students. And I really do, and it's not about the numbers of test scores. And like I said it before, I don't think it's test scores. It's what they do in the school. And if we need to fund it, we need to fund it. Yes, I don't want my taxes to go up. I'm sitting here as a taxpayer. I'm on the council to make sure that we don't spend the money. We don't spend it frivolously. We can't. And we do have to sit there and mind our p's and q's. But this is for kids. This is the kids of the town. Our future councilman, our future town manager. Our future teachers. And yes, we can't do it every year, but as Marie has put it, we've given them nothing for the last three years. Nothing.
That's, that's not, that's not.
Well, I'm 125, 0.78, 0, in the three years that I've been here.
85 million.
So, but that's part of the, that's part that goes to the teachers. That goes to the students. Well, I don't want sports to be cut for these kids, because then it's on the parents. Then the parents are gonna, they're gonna sit there and they're gonna moan and complain that they have to pay to play because we've taken it away from them. I, I just, they're gonna pay it anyways. So give them the 2%. This way they don't have to do it.
It's not, it's not any, there's nothing, there's no easy way to go about.
No, there is no easy way to sit there and do that. So if you're doing 1.5 at 500 and
501, 010.
And we're at 684.
688.
688. What's 1.75? What's 1.75?
It's another $167,003.50.
1.75?
I mean, we were.
Between the two, between the 1.5 and the, what's another 0.25? It's not 501, it's what, 5?
584 or 512.
580. Hey, I'm good with that. It's not the 684,000, it's not the 501, it's somewhere in the middle. I'm a middle, I'm always in the middle. I'd like to be in the middle. I think that's where we should be. I, like I said, you guys, I know you had kids going through the school.
Yep.
Right? And he's a productive human of society. Right?
I have a response? I, um, obviously, you know, it's very hard for us. I'm sure all of us up here would like to give a lot more. I mean, it's, it's hard to sit here and and say no, but I mean, every year our mill rate is going up, and it's not just you guys, but it's going up, and it's going up, and it's going up. And our small town, which, you know, I've heard these lines before, doesn't have a lot, it's got, it's great community, but it doesn't have a lot of what these other towns offer that have a lot lower of a mill rate. And I can't foresee the mill rate being zero next year or going down next year. And it's just, I don't like this, I don't like this part of, of doing this, because I, I don't like saying no to. But my, my wife's in the school system, my daughter-in-law's in the school system. Not in this system, but in another system, so I, it is, is very, very hard. But I know our school system, as far as students, there's less students in the school now than there was a few years ago, and there's more teachers.
And I'll speak to that.
Right?
I'll speak to that.
So we have a, our student body shrinking and our teachers are growing. We have more, more teachers and more coaches. And, you know, that's, and it, but it's, it's not just that. It's hard, it's hard to do this. It is hard.
So just a couple of side comments. This is an appropriate time just to speak to that, I think. In, in the last seven years, approximately 100 homes have been built in North Branford. We're definitely on an uptick in the last seven years. Seven years prior to that, you never had greater than six houses built or permits taken in one year for residential homes. In the last seven, you've had 11, 8, 17, 10, 10, 18, 13, and 10. And the homes that are being constructed here are large homes. They're multi-bedroom homes. There's children coming into the system because of the work of what you've done to get our educational system to where it's at, that new high school. It's, people are gonna continue to want to come to this town. It's a safe school system. You know what we've done with security. You know how we take that. You know that we've gotten kids out of the pandemic to go back to school because that was important to us, and we're continuing to grow. Education has changed dramatically in the last 20 years. Okay? So the numbers that you're seeing, when you look at, and it's easy to look at numbers and not really understand when you say, okay, certified staff in 1718 was 172, and 2324 was 170. We're down two total, but our staffing has increased because of many things. We've lost 200 students in those seven years. Okay? So that averages about 29 students over 14 classes, or about two kids per class each year for the last seven years. So when you look at that, you can't just say, okay, well, we need to start cutting teachers for two students per class. We educate from pre-K3 all the way to their 22nd birthday year if they're identified special ed student in our program at the Auger House. Okay? So two per year doesn't mean we can lock off, you know, let's reduce a class. All my administrators are here, they'll speak to their class sizes for what they currently have. But what's different now in over the last 10 years is that we, we have a behavior. Sarah can speak to you about what we're seeing because of, of the pandemic and a lot of the behavior changes that we're dealing with in the schools with our students. We brought an athletic trainer line, which was a very good move for us to have for all of our students in middle and high school. Preschool teachers, the program, we had to increase the teachers and the paraprofessionals. We added a new custodian because of the new high school. That was something that was resonating loud and clear that you built this new building, you need more custodial help, and John will tell, still tell you, we're understaffed for custodians total in the district. Okay? That's not where we're focusing our money. Security guards. We have 10 security guards. We protect our schools from 6:00 in the morning to 6:00 o'clock at night. We also have a greeter in each building. There's four greeters that we didn't have before that welcome you in and take those duties away from the security guard so they can focus on more important issues other than signing people in and out. Special service coordinator, with what we've seen and what we had to do, we've changed the position within our special ed to, to take some of the, the burden off of our special ed director. And that's paid great dividends. I mentioned the greeters, a social worker. We added one social worker, and, and we probably could add more. If you look at any district around the state of Connecticut, the biggest challenge right now, I don't care where they're at, it's with mental health issues. Without a question. And, and, and the, the funding for it, every budget around us, I don't care where you go, the numbers are way higher because the state and federal money has run out. And now people have dug holes. We brought the coaches on, four coaches through a school improvement grant that we received at the middle school. It's over now. That grant has run its course, and now the tough decisions are, when we get to this process, what are we gonna do with them? Okay? Are we gonna continue with the coaching model? Are we gonna have to let those people go? And that's the charge of the Board of Ed. I'm just saying, those are the things, those are the things when you look at staffing numbers. Education has changed. The times have changed. And, and we're the biggest chip in town. 300-plus employees, 500,000 square feet of building space. A high school that's gonna cost us more to heat and cool, we know. But it's also gonna bring people into this community, and we know it. And there's a realtor here now who I think is on the Board of Ed, and she'll tell you, there's not a lot of inventory, correct, in North Branford at this time. There's not. And houses are selling real quick.
All over.
All over. Well, in North Branford, I know. Because I know someone that put their house on the market, sold it in three days for 25,000 more than they were asking.
Right, but it's just, it's just not North Branford though.
I'm not saying that.
Because, because we're the highest mill rate in the neighborhood. And we don't have as many services as, as all of our neighboring towns.
You don't have room one. I get it.
So just look at the mill rate and what you get, what services they provide the resident. Where our taxpayers, our, excuse me, our taxes are predominantly
On the taxpayer.
On the, on the residentials. So we have to, we, I think we have to be as tight as we can be, and we may not be able to be have, be so to have, eh, eh, more than we can handle, eh, you know, financially. And, and it's a tough, it's a tough thing.
I, I respect that, Tom. I understand it.
It's hard. I mean, I, I look at the mill rates. This, this one's at 29, this one's at 26, and we're at 34, and we're gonna go up. And it's like, you know, we have, we have 75% of our residents approximately that don't participate in, in the Board of Ed. And that's, that's a tough one for a lot of people to, to absorb, you know, so.
The, the growth of your town, not telling you anything that you do not know. The future of your town, the growth of your town is on your, on your school system, and that's what's driving 100 new homes here that are 3,000 plus.
But, but all our neighboring towns have new school systems or fair.
They also have room one.
Right, but I'm, I'm just saying, they, they, they have that, so. Right, and, and that, that's exactly right. So we have, that, that makes it even harder for us.
And we have to do work, do diligence, not spending the money.
The problem with our town is we don't attract businesses, because we don't have.
We don't have the room for it.
We don't have the space for it. What hurts a town is bringing in citizens. You wanna bring in business.
I know.
I get it.
You don't wanna bring in citizens.
No, what I'm saying is, we don't have the space, we don't have the space for commercial property. And yes, it is on the residential community to sit there and pay for everything that we have. And we, I understand it. Like I said, I'm a taxpayer. I don't want my taxes to go up. I've lived here for 40 years. There's a reason why I live here. I've stayed here. Okay? I, it's a
It's our role here, right?
That's right. I'm just saying. Last week I was late. I was stuck behind a tractor. I, I like that. I'm sorry. But I, it's just, it's all about the kids, and if I don't take care of our kids, the town will die.
Would you consider, uh, we, we are gonna make your decision, and I respect that, but you, you brought up today the 25 account. The ability to, to save up to the 2% on top of that 300-plus thousand dollars that we could use towards next year as well. So your accounting practices stay strong. We know that the health insurance came in lower. So if there's ways for us to, when we, when we look at any savings this year, to put into that 2%, 25 account over the amount that you gave, that would help.
Well, but the problem with that message is that if you can now save, the, the message that I get from that is if we continue to allow you to put, save money each year. This 275 that we're putting into Fund, the account 25, is specifically due to the solar credits. That's where that money came from. If we allow you to put more in, then the message that we're sending is that we gave you too much money this year.
Well, when we forecast out health benefits towards next year, we all picked a number, and it came in lower. We didn't know it was gonna come in at 3%. When we had the savings of a middle school principal, because we had a resignation at the first day of school of that position, we saved the money there. So I'm saying to you, these are things that we cannot calculate, that happened to us, that we could not forecast. So what we're saying to us is that if you're efficient with your budget, and you're, you're open and forward with your budget, and you do have that savings, the state established that for a reason. That 2% was, was established for this because we don't have a contingency account. It shouldn't be a punishment. It shouldn't look any other way. We're budgeting within 1% or 2% of a $35 million budget.
Yeah, but the, the, what he talked about on the insurance is for next year. The 8% or 3%. So, so that's the savings that's in his projected budget, so if we give him less, then that's where one of the cuts will come from.
How many, how many snow days did I have this year?
Two.
Two. Okay, so I, I had to forecast, no pun intended, for this current year for overtime for episodic snow rule. Betting, hedging on what happens if we have sub-zero temperatures for extended amounts of time for fuel and cost. You understand the budget. There's some things that may happen in the next three months that we may save a little more money. I don't think we're gonna have snow again. I'm asking the council to consider that. It, it's, it's not, it's not being irresponsible. It was established 2% because you're budgeting within 98% of a very large.
Scott, that would help you if we were knowing the number that we're looking at at 1.5.
It doesn't cost you anything and it helps us.
I, I'm one for efficient budget management, and I think that if you, if you're able to do things within the year, like you said, things happen, and you can maybe save some dollars. I'm all for that. I'm, I'm, I may not be in the majority here, but I'm speaking.
But so what's that number that year?
I don't have it. I have three months of school. I don't know the solar number of the next three months. I'm just saying, it's the ability to go up to 2% to move that forward to offset next.
Well, we have to, we have to have a number. We can't say up to 2%. So we have to give a number. So we've, we've already allocated.
2% of our budget, you know.
Is roughly 66.
668014.
668.
I agree. You have to kind of come meet us there.
Scott, just a quick, just a quick question, and first, just to
We're already giving him 275.
I got a quick question, but just to back up on what Tommy and Walter said, this, this is, this is very, very difficult for us. And we would like to give you more money. I, I do need to give you kudos on the way you guys handled COVID. I know we can be tough on you guys at times. COVID and security, the two points you brought up, I mean, you guys have done a fantastic job with that, and, and, and I want to thank you for that. My question with regards to the, what you were just talking about with the 2% fund money and stuff like that. If we
We have to amend.
If we didn't allow you to do that, right, what, what would happen to that money on a normal basis?
Well, because I can't guarantee it's spent on things this year. Textbooks, things like that, that, you know, we may not need, but we, we need to, you know, try to forecast offset. It helps us more if it's real money on July 1. You know, as we work for, not knowing what's gonna happen next year.
Yeah, 500.
Okay. Is there any, is there any downside to?
No, we can, we can go back and amend, we can go back and amend the, you know, amend that.
I mean, I totally.
Scott, can 600 do it? And the 2%?
668014.
Let's just, no, 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 that's not.
That's not, that's not accurate though, because we already put money in there from the solar credits.
Minus the three.
Well, it's, it's, if we just give him a flat number and just go 650. We're not, we have to give a number.
Right. So you've given me 300 and something for solar credits.
No, we're, we gave you 275. So that would be out of, that would be.
275.
Right. So we, we can just amend this motion and instead of 275, just put a different dollar amount in there. And, and as long as we don't exceed the 668.
668.
So, so let, let's, let's go through this.
Go through what?
Well, the, the, the numbers are starting to grow here, so let's just go through. What, what, I wanna, I wanna hear what, what, what the, what the number is, what words coming from and what it is.
But right now, there's a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
And the, the motion on the floor is what we're going to increase their budget by. So we have to take care of that motion first, because we can go back and amend the motion that we had for the Fund 25, the 2%.
So what you're saying is if we go to the 1.5, we increase it 1.5. We're gonna give them 600,000 in the Fund 25. So they're gonna get a 1.5% increase.
Hold on, so that's not the motion on the floor?
No.
The motion on the floor is the 2%.
But she can amend her motion, the second can be amended, and we can go back and make the amendment to the 2% fund. So that's how you do it.
Where's that money coming from?
Their current year budget.
It's savings from their current year budget, up to 2%.
Well, now, we, we would do a
Yeah, I mean, we would do, we would do a solid number, but, yeah, but that's, in a nutshell, that's what it is.
What is the solid number?
Test number, I have.
No, 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 no. The, the motion on the floor is for, we have to take care of the operating budget, which was Marie's motion.
You have to put to this here. You change your motion to 501.
Why 501?
Because that's 1.5.
That's 1.5.
But then we're gonna do a motion for the Fund 25 for the savings, when he does a savings of 600,000.
So I can amend this motion to what he's saying, 501?
Right, because you made.
Add your motion to that, because we're not doing it off of percentages, we're going off of dollars.
Whatever money that saves over the course of the year, it's in the Fund 25, up to 600,000.
So there's gonna be 600,000.
No, 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 it's, it's a process.
Okay, I'm gonna amend my motion to 501,000 10 cents. No, 7, I'm sorry, 10, 71 cents. There's no cents. We're not doing cents. Okay, well, that's what you gave me cents.
It's the real math.
I, I do it, I do what Jeff tells me.
It's the real math, sorry. Just do, yeah, sorry.
All right, so 501 and 10,010 dollars. 501, 010.
And then your second was, second that one, for 501?
010.
010, and no change.
Right. Right. Okay, so the motion has been amended so that the Board of Education 2425 operating budget will be increased by 501, 010 over the 2324 operating budget. Marie amended the motion and Bruce seconded the amendment. So that is the amount that's on, that's the motion that's on the floor right now.
What percentage is that, then?
It's, it's 1.5% over, increase over his current budget. So 1.5% increase.
We slashed it by five and a half percent.
No. By more, because it was 7.7.
Oh, it's 7, I'm sorry, 7.7. Almost 6%. A little over 6%. We slashed his budget by 6%.
Okay, so is there any further discussion on this? Okay, roll call.
Mayor McMillan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McMillan?
Yes.
Councilor Abelson?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Gold?
No.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Paligia?
Yes.
Councilor Palladino?
Here.
Councilor Zampano?
No.
Okay. Motion carries 7 to 2. Okay. So now we're gonna go back to the motion. So it was our third, Catherine, can you just tell me who made the motion and who seconded the one for the?
For the Fund 25?
Yes.
Councilor Paligia made the motion and Councilor Zampano seconded.
Okay, so Councilor Paligia would you?
What number would you like me to amend it to?
600 flat.
600 flat? Okay. So I'd like to amend my motion, my original motion, to the Board of Education can transfer up to $600,000 from the 2023, 2024 budget.
from the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget to the two percent fund, AKA Fund Twenty-Five, to be used in twenty-four, twenty, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five. All expenditures from this fund must be approved by the Board of Education.
And Mr. Z, Councilor Zampiano, do you wanna second that?
Second.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obstained? Motion carries. Okay. Okay, so that concludes the budget distortion. Anthony, do you need a few minutes to Okay, so we are going to just take a five-minute recess while Anthony Yes.
Before, before we leave Fund Board Bed, I wanna thank the council. Uh, this has been a lot of work. I know there's a lot of, uh, energy and emotion that goes into this, and you have a tall task ahead of you with everything we've shared tonight. Uh, we respect that. Uh, we're really proud of our school system. We have an incredible administrative team and teachers, and more importantly, students in the district. Uh, and, and they thank you as well, so we appreciate it.
Go Thunderbirds.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.